Can one of you guys turn on these monitors? I don't know anything about that. Okay, so I've started the Zoom meeting.
Okay.
Okay. And everything is hooked up to my computer. Okay? That's okay. All right. So everything's hooked up there. Yours is underneath, so forget that. We won't use that. Use my computer. Because you don't need me to do anything in my computer. Right?
Ah, yes, I do. I'll get it running. Just give me a second.
This is their flash drive for tonight's presentation. And you've got to do the... Everything on the speaker.
Yep. Yep. Okay, right there. No, no, I... Thanks.
Are you guys... Okay. Are you guys turning it off?
Yes.
Okay. Can you guys test your microphones? Turn them on, please.
Your microphone? You're gonna have to... You're gonna have to hold your voice right up to it, but it'll work. There's one more. Oh, no. Okay. Got it. Do you have your card back? Okay. Actually... Yeah. Do you have your card ready?
Yeah.
Okay. No. What's that?
Who's left? Is it mine or is it yours?
Um... Yep, I got it. I'm starting on yours. Why is my computer up in all the time?
This one's different. Any suggestions? No.
Nope. Okay, you got it. Okay. Yep, I'm running them right now. Okay. Kitty, are you ready to go? Everybody else, are you all ready to go? Okay. I would have you turn the microphone on.
Yes. Hold it close. I'd like to welcome you to our Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of March 8, 2002. We're going to start out here with pre-application meeting. We're committed to a new presentation we're probably located at 97 East Stony Hill Road.
Um... Okay. Uh, David.
Madam Chair, where would you like me to stand?
Uh, you'll stand up next to the microphone and you can just test that for me for a second, please.
Testing. Testing. Testing.
Yeah, you're good. Thank you.
Excuse me, David?
Yes.
Why don't we let one of the guys run the slides from that computer? Right?
I'll get to it. I just gotta pull up in a second.
Does that make sense, Attorney Hollister?
Yes. One of us considered the chair next to David. Yeah. Screen I'm gonna look at.
No, no. There you are, Attorney Hollister. It's up on the screen now.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair, Commission members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tim Hollister. I'm an attorney partner with the firm at Pinkley Allen. I'm here with my client Howard Rapidport from Continental Properties and John Mancini from BL Companies. And we are here to talk about 34 acre property that is located between Old Stony Hill Road and Walnut Hill Road. It's a property that's 34 acres. It actually straddles the Newtown Bethel line, which makes for an interesting land use process, but we're gonna actually have to go into that tonight. As some of you know, we were here in November and we made a preliminary presentation and we... I'll say we got some challenging feedback that night. And we took that to heart and we spent the last three months making revisions and improvements. We were in Newtown on Thursday night last week, also on a pre-application. Not the full commission, but the chair, the vice chair, and town staff. And we got some good feedback there and some site plan revisions, which we look at going forward. But what we want to talk about tonight, and let's see. David, are you... If you're moving the slides.
David, can I have John use one of my lap packs so we can come inside?
Okay. Go ahead, John. You can use that one. Okay.
So, this is the... The property is outlined in red. Just go one more.
Yes.
Make it a little more visible. And that's the... What you just saw was the clubhouse that's proposed on Walnut Hill Road. You get to the next slide. This is just the locational slide. And then if we get to the next one, now you start to see why we think this is an appropriate site for apartments. And that is that, first of all, it's got commercial and recreational uses. It's got the shopping center, Big Y, the Allantia Nursery, right adjacent to it, and not too far away, Mitchell Park. And it is served by water and sewer, and it's right on the... On the town line. So, probably the main thing that we want to show you tonight is that because this is a large parcel, 34 acres, we have the ability to... Because it's a large parcel, we have the ability to propose a fairly larger number of units, but to concentrate them in the middle of the site. So that they will not be very visible from the boundaries of the site or from the single family. So I'm not gonna say invisible, but not very visible. And that's what we want to show you. And that indeed is really the principal thing that we tried to work on since we were here in November. Continental Properties, it's been my privilege to represent them now for almost 17, 18 years. What they're known for, and we can show you plenty of examples through photographs, or if we get further in the process, site is it's highly amenitized. Lots of beautiful amenities to go with the rental complex. Sort of a mid-rise style of architecture, but I'm gonna show you some of the amenities for which Continental is known and which we propose to bring to this development on this site. So with that introduction, I'm gonna ask Howard Rapidport from Continental Equipment. So his company and a little bit about what he's done. It's Connecticut.
Okay. Yeah.
We're gonna move that just a little bit more this way, so the problem...
Sure. See, I see. That screen?
Just a little bit.
Roll the screen.
There's two screens. The fish across will see over here. Um, let's... All right. We'll get back a little. I want them to be able to see there. That's good. That better?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ben. And thank you for your time tonight. My name is Howard Rapidport. I'm a principal with Continental Properties. We are among the largest developers in the state of Connecticut, having developed over 1,200 rental units in the past 17 years. Our nearby developments include 10 Trumbull, which is 202 units. And Trumbull completed last year. The Mark in Shelton, which is 228 units, completed about five years ago. And a community called Muse in Mulford, which is 180 units, completed last month. As Tim indicated, our expertise is in building modern rental communities that are highly amenitized. John, I'd ask you to flip through and show some of the photographs of actual communities, if you would.
Oh, here we go. Okay. Thank you.
You can keep on going. Because that's... We are a privately held company and have been building for 65 years. One major feature that differentiates us from some other builders is that we are generational holders. And this provides several benefits, we think, for your community. As generational holders, we build with the intention of holding for the long term. And long-term ownership provides your municipality with more stable management, one constant contact, and long-term curb appeal for the community. John, if you could continue to flip through. These are all... These are photographs of actual communities that we built, which shows the finishes and the amenities. The residential program here, which I'm gonna take just a few minutes to provide an overview before I hand it over to John Mancini, is comprised of a large 6,000-square-foot clubhouse plus eight buildings in total on the entire site between the two municipalities. The clubhouse will feature a clubroom, cinema room, golf simulator room, State of the Art Fitness Center, plus private co-working spaces for residents. As shown in... John, if you could flip back a couple of slides to the rendering of the rear of the clubhouse. Right there. There'll be a resort quality pool, including cabanas, fire pit grills, and a host of other outdoor amenities. The amenity program, which we're proposing to build here, this community, will be similar to what we have built in lower Fairfield County. It will be first-class.
Milo!
Again, a very, very highly amenitized community.
Good day.
On the Bethel side of the proposed development, there are three multifamily buildings, each with 38 residences, 120-pointed lobbies, hallways, and elevators. John, if you could flip to the rendering.
I can't... Can't see the...
You can't see what you're showing?
No, I can't see which...
Sure. The three buildings on the Bethel side comprise 114 units. And the five buildings on the Newtown side comprise 132 units. The 114 units are a mix of one bedrooms and two bedrooms. The breakdown is 48 one-bedrooms and 66 two-bedrooms. It's consistent with the bedroom mix.
You're gonna have to speak up.
Okay. Better? Rents are projected to start at approximately $1,900 for a one-bedroom and $2,200 for a two-bedroom. For Fairfield County, these are generally considered to be moderately priced units. In summary, and our objective...
One bed student.
Which the stakeholders of Bethel and Newtown will be proud. And with that, I'm gonna hand it over to John Mancini of BL Companies to provide a more detailed overview of those communities.
Offensive touch, please.
Okay. Good evening, members of the commission. My name is John Mancini. I'm a principal with BL Companies, 355 Research Parkway, Connecticut. It's my privilege to work with Tim and Howard on this project. To understand this project a little, if we can go to the first rendering coming into the site, I just wanna point something out. So, um... So when you're on Route 6, the frontage of our site from front to left is sloped, okay? And then as you're driving into the site, we're gonna show a few existing photographs. The site climbs quite rapidly. There's a dirt path that winds up in through there. And there's an undeveloped parcel to our right that is... You'll see in our drawings, it forms somewhat of a hole in the door. We don't control that parcel. But that's the parcel that you guys, I think, have experienced some excavation activities over the years. So, our parcel is about the short frontage on Route 6, and then the piece that I'm talking about is between the front of our parcel and the town line. Excellent.
Would you be able to speak into the microphone a little?
Yeah.
You really have to almost swallow in order to be heard.
Okay. All right.
You can remove it from its face, if that helps you.
Okay. Let's go to the site plan. The best amenities. Okay. So, this is a overall site plan. It shows that the... To the right on this slide is Newtown, to the left is Bethel. As pointed out earlier, there's three buildings in Bethel, all 38-unit four-story buildings. And it's a little blurry site. I can't tell you what building numbers they are, but... And to the right in Newtown, there's the five residential buildings plus the clubhouse. The way we access this site is off of Montferris Road. That drive comes in, it starts to climb. And by the time you get to the middle of the first two buildings on the right, they're essentially at the existing high point of the land. And that's also the high point of our road. And if you come further into the site, there's a drop-off area for buses. A little easier to see right here in the picture. And then for students, pickup. And then you come down to the lower part of the site itself. And we have an emergency access-only drive to Walnut Hill. So that is... Comes out right above the street to Walnut Hill, as you guys know, on the Newtown side of town line, it's known as Bethel Road.
Can I keep... Please hold it.
Okay.
Hold it close, you didn't have...
Yeah, you gotta keep it... Okay. Excuse me. I think you got...
Yeah. So, this plan just highlights the buildings that are predominantly all in the town line, all in Bethel. As you can see, Tim alluded to this. One of the things that we got feedback on last time was that we had buildings that were closer to Walnut Hill. There's gonna be new... There's gonna be upcoming exhibits that I'll show you that show how far away these buildings are from the closest buildings, closest homes. But we are several hundred feet into the site with that building, the closest building in Bethel. We have three buildings that are four stories, 114 units. A roughly a 60/40 split of two bedrooms to one bedrooms. They're parking at two spaces per unit. And we have a considerable amount of open space. We're roughly 80% as proposed, the overall open space in this area for the whole project is 72%. Now, open spaces, what we're saying is the green area. Okay? Excellent. Okay. This is a... Now we sort of like hone in on this lower area we're talking about. So, so this is the first unit that is behind the commercial zone of our property. So this is the first unit that is in Bethel. And we're 65 feet off the back of the nursery area there with the closest point to the building. And we're 100... 400 and... Or 672 feet off of our side property line that is heading to the part of the open space to our left. And these two buildings are 152 feet apart. Next slide. Okay. So, that was the furthest north building. Now I'm coming down to the residential street. So we are in the site now. This driveway that comes down and touches into the rural street is, like I said, an emergency driveway only. It's gated, and it will be accessed only by fire and any emergency vehicles. But as I said earlier, so we're 512... That's 600 feet. 512 feet to the middle. There's three homes in Bethel that face this frontage that we control in our town. There's one, two, three homes. The furthest home is to the far left. That's 509 feet away from the closest point in our building, 512. And then the last home is 480. We're almost 400 feet from the road. And as I said, plus 100 to the houses. The plan, when we were in here earlier, had buildings much, much closer to the road there. And we took the recommendations and the comments from this commission and then moved it public and really worked hard at concentrating development inside the site. So we're really... Gonna have a hard time really seeing any pavement or any activity other than the upper reaches of these buildings from that distance. Next slide. So in Bethel, the maximum height allowed is currently 35, but we'll be working with the regulations to allow to get the building height for the fourth story to be at 54. And the maximum density that's currently allowed is six units per area. We're looking to be at 8.24. The proposed zone changed to a PRD, which is a planned residential development zone. Currently, it's not a... Next slide.
Keep your mic up, Jim.
Yep. The density, as I said earlier, is... This is how we computed it. We have 114 units on 8.24 acres. We lose a lot of land to create the... To get to the 84 acres. A raw land, unadjusted, is 21.8. And we're... With the adjusted, we're at 13.8. So we're losing almost seven acres, over seven and a half acres to steep slopes and mountains. Slide two. And this is the combined density, the total units being 246. And if you take all the land, take all the used land, we're roughly at around 10 and a half acres. Humans bring. That's... So I was talking earlier about sort of the terrain and what we're faced with. And it's really important to understand this as we proceed through these slides. This is a picture on Route 6, looking into the site. And it's taken out a diagonal from... And it's taken out a diagonal from, looking up the hill. So these are some of the cross-sections that we will be showing you. So we've taken cross-sections. We'll be looking at BB, AA, CC, so three from the residential area and two from the commercial area. Next slide. So this is Section AA, which is a section that is closest to the residential area here. So as I was saying earlier, the house, gosh, this is so hard to see.
175 Walnut Hill Road.
Yeah, so 175, thank you, Walnut Hill Road. Is the building all the way to the left. So as you can see here, if you're in a car driving by, regardless of whether or not, forgetting the fact that there's going to be mature vegetation at some point, but with the sloping and the filling we're doing, the building, you're seeing basically the upper floor and the roof line of that building. That's the sightline of the true cross-section. Next cross-section, please. This is building BB. But again, this building from the closest residential house, which is 175 Walnut Hill Road, is 485 feet away. So the sightline that you see here, this just happens to be an area where there's less grading going on and the terrain is flatter a little, so you're seeing the upper levels of this building. Next slide. This is a location where we're still at Walnut Hill Road, but we're now looking at House 167 Walnut Hill Road. And if you're in a car looking at this, the way this whole thing is being sloped and the way we are burning this area, you literally can't see the building at all with the burning. But you're, again, 460 feet away from the street and probably another, I don't know, 100 feet plus to the house. Next slide, please. So now we're on Route 6, and we're looking up the hill that I was talking about. And this building is the first residential building that you see, which is, you're seeing the short side of the building right here. And that side is, that building is right there. And again, that's over 550 feet away from our property line on the commercial street. Next, next cross-section. And this is the last cross-section PE, which is this vicinity here. And you've just seen, you've seen the clubhouse first, and then the tops of that first building on the side. Next slide. This is just views looking in. As I said earlier, there's that dirt drive, you guys got five, there's a dirt drive that climbs up into that. So when we plan this out, next, next slide, please. We have to work with the existing grades, right? So now I'm going to walk you through the site and some of the topographic features. So this is our entrance drive off of Route 6. We'll probably be doing a little bypass widening for the left turns coming into the site. And our clubhouse, working with the terrain, is a two-level clubhouse. So you're looking at the, I'll call it the bottom level or first level, that's at the Route 6 street level. But even that is sloped up and higher. And then, next slide, please. We climb up and we wind and the slide that... I'm sorry, because I can't, I can't do this.
Watch your image.
Just possible. I'll try to speak into the mic, but I hope I'm not in the way here. So this plan, can you go back to the, yes, to this plan? But the one that shows the backside of the pool? That's all the way back. Okay, so, so in that first slide, we came in the drive. And now that drive is coming around, and now we're at the second level. So this is the upper level of the clubhouse. So as we come into the, into the site, now we can go to the site plan. I just wanted to point out how we're able to do that. So again, we just came in, you just saw a picture of what it would look like rendered this way. And then you looked at a rendering this way. This is our first residential unit. The way these units have been laid out is that the parking needed that's necessary for that unit, the two, the two spaces per unit are parked at the unit itself. So someone's not going to be assigned a parking space where they're walking 300 feet to get to their unit. So each one of these units is properly parked, and the spine road has no parking on it. So wide enough, if somebody wanted to have parking on it, but that's not what we're proposing. We have ample parking for both our units and our visitors. We're parking more than the industry standard at the two per unit. Typically, it's more like 1.8 per unit. So, and, and, and we talked about the total number of bedrooms being 286. And just, the 246, the land use maps, so let's go through that again. So a couple, so go back one, two, two slides, sorry, go back one more. So this plan, we added one of the comments the other night from Newtown. The fire marshal was at our meeting. He wanted to make sure that we created a plan that was called a truck turning map, a plan that is, shows the fire truck articulating its way through as well as the school bus. And as you can see, the fire truck can get through and at any one of these buildings through the way that the road is designed. Next plan. They also wanted to see a blow-up of where the school bus drop-off was. So we added this plan as well. So this school bus drop-off is located right at the town line. You have, you know, 117 units that are in Bethel. And then you have the other units there, the rest of the 246. In Newtown, we've created a central location for the school drop-off. And that's where it is there. Okay, next slide. So this is an existing analysis of slopes when, when, when your, your regulations require that you determine steep slopes and wetlands in order to get to your adjusted lot area to get all your coverages. So as you can see, we have a very challenging site. Our site is a series of, I'll call it, you know, you know, moguls. Really, there's just a lot of bumps and undulations in the ground. So the red area is representing slopes that are 25% of greater. And then the yellow areas are 20, 15, and so on, so forth. So when we're all said and done, we, we are cutting into this area in order to get appropriately graded road, a 5% grade max, and a little bit steeper here at the beginning. And then appropriate grading at the front of the building for the accessible routes and stuff. We have retaining walls where we need them. But this is just a slope analysis of what happens after we've done that. Go ahead, next slide. So as I pointed out, pretty amazing, the grade that we're touching down with our emergency drive down on our back residential road is 495. And our starting grade on Route 6 is 495. However, the high point in the site in the middle goes up to 575. So there's a grade change of around 80 feet, and in this case, it's 90 feet to 100 down in this direction. This is a big wetland box that's going to be on the skirt, and this is another wetland here. Okay, that's, okay. So when we graded this site, when we looked at the grading to determine rear walls from deep to go or limited disturbance, we tried to mimic what was happening with the grade out there now. So what do I mean by that? The highest buildings on the site that we're proposing are at the highest existing grade locations as well. So why that's effective is because it allows you to handle your runoff by not changing your drainage patterns, and you're able to match where the water is flowing pre and post. So that's very important. But also it allows us to work with the grades and minimize as much as possible the rock removal.
That's it.
We are proposing a balanced site condition here. So the amount of material cutting is placed in the areas needed to fill.
Sure.
So very important. The lowest building on our site is this one at five, elevation 520. But that's still 20 feet above the grade road below. And again, the grade up here is 500. And the clubhouse is at 520. And the lower level of the clubhouse is at around 509. That's what we have. Okay, so go back to the clubhouse one, all the way to begin. Just leave that. So Tim, I don't know if there's anything else you want to mention, or do we want to just leave it to the commission to maybe have questions or?
Let me close our pre-app with this note on the zoning. You don't have a regulation that exactly mirrors what we would want to do, but we've been chatting with Beth, proposing to take your PRD regulation and using that as a model. It's going to require some changes and work with commission and with Beth and to make sure that we don't upset your PRD. I know that was created for the Toll Brothers development, but I would say that we are not proposing affordable units in this development. And the main reason for that is, so that's a difference from your PRD. The main reason for that is that the site work on this development is quite expensive. And we want to, and also we think the market for demand is what we've called moderately priced market regulations. So that's the, that's, that's, if you want to have your sort of a first place amenities throughout the site, that costs some money. Mr. Notorious won't make that investment. So that's the proposal this one. So this is a pre-app. We'd be very appreciative of your feedback. And also, obviously, we deserve to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the commission members. So we start with Ken Carson.
I like the presentation. Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
She's very nice. Where the Walnut Hill Road is and your building that is closest to that?
Okay.
Are there mature existing trees upon that road along that edge already? And if they are, are you going to leave it?
I don't, I've got to go down and photograph. I don't, I, I don't know the answer to that question, but I believe in the bottom, I'm not sure, you're the bottom right corner. We are going to be leaving an existing, some existing trees there. We can take what you're saying and see if we can adjust our grades. We really have to have a fire access drive that meets the fire code. But one of the reasons why we're winding the road the way we are is to try to meet the challenge of the grading. But we might be able to modify this area here to leave this tree canopy. Right now, we render it that we are, but I don't know what type of mature trees are in there. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Very nice. I love all the drawings and sightlines. I don't like that all buildings are 15, 17, all over 13. That's, in my opinion, it's too big for the neighborhood. I don't like the fact there's no affordability. We've been taking affordable housing definitely very seriously, and this will put us back. Set our ratios off.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also really enjoyed the presentation. I have a quick question, I don't hate to have an answer. Do you know the height? Do you know the height of the big Y and the nursery buildings?
Well, the, the big Y, so we do a lot of commercial development like that. The big Y, the normal height of the big Y there, I'll call it there, their roof line plus their, what they have is a parapet wall.
Right.
That's a height that ranges from 28 to 30 feet. But then they also have a false structure that elevates above that. That I don't know.
Do you know how high that elevates? That's additional.
Well, I'll work with Beth to see if there's a plan at the town hall in the building office, and we'll get that height, because that would be a good reference. So, yep.
And I am also concerned about the lack of affordable housing in this group, you know, as Paul put it. And I'm a little bit concerned about the height of the buildings. How tall are the buildings going to be in the Newtown property?
Well, they're three-story.
Okay.
So, so important to note that the closest building, the closest building in to the residential road, this is a three-story building, so that's not 50 feet high, okay? These are three, they're 50 feet high. And this one, the closest point to a residential house is almost 600 feet away.
I, I understand that, I'm just wondering, I'm just questioning with that, that the other buildings are in Bethel.
Yeah, because in Bethel, we are allowed four-story structures. In Newtown, they're not allowed, and this is driven by the fire marshal.
Okay, but also in Bethel, if I'm correct, there's a 35-foot height limit, and you're requesting something that's 19 feet higher.
I, I understand there's just a little bit of an inconsistency in the regulations, right? Because...
I'm not sure if the regulations are inconsistent.
No, but, but if four stories are allowed, and your height is only 35, I, I wouldn't want to design that structure for you. So there's something going on with that. But we, we will be working with writing a regulation. You can't have four stories fit in a 35-foot height. That's what I'm...
So my suggestion is perhaps we can reconfigure so that we're down to three stories.
Right.
If not, the regulation is wrong, it's that you're looking to...
Right, so, so, no, respectfully, ma'am, I do want to say that we had three-story buildings when we showed you last time. That means we're closer to the residential street. And as a compromise, we got rid of the entire building, and we went up one story and were able to pull everything into the middle of the site, being almost 600 feet away from the closest residential. So we, we were trying to understand what we heard before and trying to react in a positive way. And we're going to now take your feedback this time and understand what we can do as well.
That's great, thank you.
But I wanted to give you a real good answer on why we did what we did.
Understood, thank you very much.
Yep, okay.
So Paul.
I'll echo everybody else's thoughts, thanks for the, the guy presentation. A couple of questions. One, just generally for the site grading plan, how much of that is removal?
Oh, so let me try to go to that plan here quick. So it's, it's a cut and fill scenario. So, so, so if you see, and I'm sorry because the screen is really kind of hard to follow. So in this scenario, brown is where we're cutting the most. And then the lighter brown is, we're cutting less. The gray, oops, that must have been, yeah, it's a little too close. So the gray area is minimal cutting. And then as you start to turn and get into the green... And then as you start to turn and get into the greens, those are all the filled areas. So that's how this plan reads. So that highest point in the middle of the site, I think I said it went up to four, seven, five seventy five. You see our, our highest first floor of a building is like roughly thirty feet below that elevation. So that brown area represents an area that we're taking down about thirty feet.
And then just to make sure I understand, so as far as the school bus access.
Yep.
You have buses from two school districts all coming in off of Route six.
Correct, correct. We, we could have, again, the feedback last time was your town preferred not to have access to the residential street from this project. So, so there's no other way. So.
So from a two lane road.
Yeah, but I had said earlier, good point, I had said earlier, so because this is a state road and because your town will also ask for this, we will do a proper bypass lane, not a lane, but there'll be a bypass area so that when a vehicle is turning, another vehicle can go by. That's going to be a requirement of our permit with the state. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. It's well thought out. I would echo what you've heard already on the lead. I'm very concerned about that. Also, I'm concerned on the desert, you know, obviously, you know, you're not doing this to not me. But maybe at some point my, it's trumping what the, what's reasonable in that, you know, my concern with the height.
So the, the development cost, I think just to add a little bit to what Tim was saying is, so when you have a site that has a lot of earth removal and earth movement, cutting and filling, that's one cost. But when you factor in that one of your materials is rock and as you can see in this one area, to get a reasonable roadway profile for our spine road to come in and then allow for our fire access to touch back down, we are removing a lot of rock and, you know, crushing and processing a lot of materials. And we, in order to not have any wetlands filling, we also have a lot of retaining walls that we need to catch that fill slope as we pointed out earlier. So it's an expensive site to develop, more than the typical development cost of a site. So those obviously go factored into cost per unit as, you know, as you know. And so, but we, we needed the feedback. So we're hearing what you're saying and we'll be discussing that.
Thank you for your presentation.
Well, we, we have not. We've talked to staff in, in both towns, but if they don't, then we will have to do a proper bus stop on Route six with a turnoff area and, you know, and a safe pocket for a bus stop. That's what we'll have to do.
And I'm also concerned about the height of the building next to the residential area. I understand directly from why you moved it back and how you had to go up.
Right.
Where to move back. What's the difference between the size distance in that house and you stayed with the three stories? Which will you see more of a building from a residential area?
Well, so if, if we have to go back to, quite frankly, if, if we went with, you know, four, three story buildings instead of three, four story buildings, right? Just doing common sense math, the building and eventually that building, to put the building, to place it, will be closer. So the three story building will be closer to Walnut Hill Road than the four story building is today. So that's an interesting question, you know, maybe that's a plan to do. And that is, I'm not sure that you're going to see any less of the building, even though it's only three stories. Because.
From what they see from the roadway was what they see from those houses going along where they started the property in the residential area.
I understand. I, I understand.
The portability, I mean, we have that portability in there for a reason, trying to, you know, need to afford it. Maybe give that up and manage it with other developers. We have to be careful that we don't give it up to one while we're managing others.
Understood. You're welcome.
In answering your thoughtful question about the bus management property, I know that in other country condos, the buses do go in there to pick up the children. So I don't think that's an issue.
Okay.
Question about the timing, though, whether we tell Beth what we're going to be picking up at the same time.
Yeah.
I appreciate the modifications you made to that we've got to get this way of stuff. I'm just wondering if our needs are single floor buildings or are they going to be multiple?
No, these are, you know, apartments on one level. They're flats. Yeah. But you can see, I mean, I, you know, after the presentation that we did, I think it's just worth taking a second. After the presentation we did last week in Newtown, I came home and I was bragging about how I'm in this project and to my wife. And she's like, stop saying that. We just built the house. And I'm like, look at this. Like this would be so much easier to live in. And I'm trying to get back to the, the inside. But I mean, these are amenities, but to, to see the inside of a unit, that's a pretty impressive. And these are actual photographs. So this is what he's built, you know, this isn't a. Understood, understood. Yep.
Why did they wind it up to do the straight road? Why are they winding back the parking lot?
Let me just, let me see if I can get to that slide. So, so, sir, if we pull straight, we're not climbing enough. So the, the road has to do this in order to, two things. One, to chase the grade further, right? So to have a reasonable slope of the drive. And two, the other thing is, is when you do it this way, you never get a real effect of the road, right? You never see the road. You're always looking across landscaping on either side of it. See what I'm saying? Thank you.
Thank you. My presentation is absolutely fabulous. I, I couldn't only relate when a lot of people are said. Affordable has huge year.
Oh, now everybody likes affordable.
I need a clearer picture. I, I, as I said, I think you said that at the entrance, it's four hundred and ninety five feet. At its height, it's five seventy five. So we're talking about massive excavation here.
No, yeah, so let me go to that slide. So the maximum excavation in that one spot is thirty feet, like I said.
Okay, so at the very top, like it's five seventy five was.
Yeah, yeah.
What is that going to be after you clear?
Yeah, that's, okay. So yep, I got you. Let me get to that. So, let, let me just be clear. So the average grade of our site is really five twenty, five thirty, five thirty. This is that knoll that I'm talking about. That's a rock outcrop in that area. That's the height point. So when we go to our proposed grade for that area, that high point, you saw that brown, the brown mound. So the, the first floor of that building goes from five seventy five down to five forty three. So this is that thirty foot most cut going on right here. Yeah, yeah. So that's why like this building is going to be set low. You'll hardly see that across this lot that we don't control because it's going to be down. You know, it's not at that five seventy five. It's at the four, five forty five. This is the only building you're really going to see from Route six and you're seeing the short side of that building only. And, and just to be clear.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry. I haven't tell right now where the buildings are right here. Which two buildings are there?
Right here. This is a building and this is a building.
So the one that is at the highest height has a building.
Correct, but that is going to be beyond. So the back of this building is going to have a, a cut. So half, more than half of this three story building is going to be buried at this point. You know what I'm saying? Because, go back one slide, sorry. Three story, that's three stories. So this one, one, yeah, yeah, right there. Sorry.
That's okay.
So how tall is a three story? Thirty eight feet. To the mid, yeah. So sorry, that wasn't, let me just go. Yeah, so, so anyway, so that building is, is going to go right here, right? So.
That's five forty five.
The, the five forty five first floor. But what I'm saying is that ring right there is also a five seventy five, just like that one. So the back of that building, wish I could draw this for you, but from at the property line, the grade's going to come down and then the building is going to be at this grade. So from this property line looking over, you're only seeing half the building because it's set down.
But you're going to see.
But you're going to see half of a thirty eight foot high building.
Right, exactly.
Right, so.
I mean, I, I think, I think there's a little bit more work to do both.
Okay.
Between the height and affordable and the grading and the, and the four story, I think we're going to have a bit more work to do before it will be happening at this application.
I do want to point something out to you that the building here, the closest building that's several hundred feet away from.
I was on that one today.
Yeah, yeah.
And I looked at that property and you, and like when you, when you clear that top and you're, you're driving down that road, you're going to see those buildings. And they're, they're going to be huge and they're staring at you. And I understand it. I understand perfectly. But I think there has to be a better way. I'm going to do it.
So that building unfortunately is, oops, sorry, yeah, right, it's right here. It's just off the page. So I can't, I can't get that distance for you, but I, I do want to point out that the side of this building, so if you look at that distance on the side of these buildings and you look at the length of these houses, they're looking at the, when you're looking at the short side of this building, which is what this building is, that's the closest building, it's no different than the width of a residential home. And this, again, I hate to keep saying this, but this is a three story structure. It's not the four story structure.
Well, then you should have.
Right.
Bethel one is the four story.
Right, but the closest home is five hundred and thirty nine feet away from it. So.
Well, a fair piece of land, but you have a four story building. You're, you're going to see it.
We're building a huge berm here. That's what, I can go back to the cross section for you. Yeah, I got you. I got you. So.
Going from here, I'm not seeing this.
Yeah, I got you. So.
Okay, I just have one more. Over.
Yeah, no, no, I was just going to try to go to that cross section for you so I could show you. So in front of that closest, that house that's refurbished out on one eighty sixth, we're building this berm. So that's the existing grade and we're probably putting twenty feet of fill in here. So we're building a berm. So now you're not going to be seeing that building. I just like these are details, but that's why that area is so green.
I wish I didn't want to say that.
Yeah, so. So, yeah, so, I mean, that area I was talking about is this massive area here. This is all going to be.
I have a question as another question.
When you say the mid level of the road line.
Yep.
Okay, that's not the actual physical height, right?
Well, it's the, the way height is defined in any town.
Right, we've been, we've been down this road before. We just need to know the exact height of the top of the road of any particular road.
Okay.
Because that's not going to be fifty seven.
Hey, I understand. We. Yeah, well, we're, we're going to be accurate by your definition. We were trying to be accurate by the definition of the regulations, which is the, so, yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, I apologize for that. It's interesting because when you get a commission in a room, you get me in a room and you start looking at a plan and looking at a plan. Sometimes more ideas come to you. So please take this with a rate of thought. But when I look at the spine road coming up Walnut Hill, okay, we've had a lot of discussion about that tonight. And I go out to Route six. What about using that fifty foot strip? Because the point is, all you're trying to do is create access in case of emergency. If that maintenance is blocked, how else do you get out of it? And that's just a thought.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can explore that. We were looking.
Again, it's, it's something one of the commission members had mentioned in a previous conversation. And I just thought, I just found that very interesting.
We will look, there are some wetlands over there, so we have to look at that, but we'll.
You should, you know where it's from.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Because it looks like it just, you know, it goes up to the top of that.
Which, which side? I think I just want to go back and.
And I, and I, you have to, excuse me, I can't remember who was the.
So the strip of land that, that is talking about is we own this property right here. So.
There's a dirt path going up there now.
Yeah. So if I'm the fire marshal in either town, and I'm not, so I'm just talking as a civil engineer, all my fire trucks have to be on this side of the site. What this does is it allows you to traverse all the way through. This is probably more expensive for us to build than building it here. It, but we'll look at it. I'm just thinking that if I was thinking of life safety, that this is probably the better place because it gets you to a whole nother public road system.
Well, that was not, you know, it's not our problem.
Because if there's something going on on Route six, we can't get to this driveway, we probably can't get to that driveway. Because they're so.
I was, I was thinking more of interior and not exterior.
Yeah, but we'll look at that as well.
Okay. The other thing is in, in, I will take full responsibility for the use of four story buildings. I thought that being adjacent to Route six and opposed to Route six, it was a good way to try to balance the site. Leave denser buildings to the front, but in hopes of creating more of the rear of the site being open and maintain its natural state. And again, that's all part of working together and compromising and things of that nature. But again, in looking at the site, I'm concerned about all the fill now that's could possibly go into the rear. Um, but again, in looking at the site, I'm concerned about all the build now that's could possibly go into the rear of it. So I think while we're offline, I'd like to spend a little bit more time talking to the advocates on that. Um, but please understand the purpose was, yes, we know it's a difficult site, but let's try to have the opportunity to work together to see what we can come up with. That could be, um, palatable for the town and for a possible development that isn't an eight-thirty-two. You know, if, if it's just straight to the point, let's see what's going on. But I do have, those are just a few things that I wanted to bring up for everyone else to think about. And we'll go from there. That's all I have to say.
But Paul, can we do that one more question?
Okay.
Um, I appreciate you said that when you came up with some of the commission's comments.
Yeah.
And adjusted them. I wasn't a member then, but I was at that meeting. And I think there might have been a misunderstanding. The commission was kinda saying that the project was huge. And they were kinda continuing to make it smaller, not eliminate a building, slice it to a tiny stack it. That's, that was just, I see which way you guys took it.
Right.
You still getting the exact same amount of bedrooms that you wanted or units when reducing the building? I think the commission at the time was suggesting, like, the whole project. So that's just a comment I wanted to say.
Okay.
Um, and I would agree with that, that I think it's just a huge project, uh, wasn't good. Right, thank you, that's all.
No, I think we've taken enough of your time and members of the public's time and we thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna continue with our meeting now. We're going on to our next speaker. Of the upstream properties, Baffin and Site Plan Special Report, it's Tony Hillwell. Is.
Thank you, I think. Good evening, my name is, I'm an attorney with an office here in Bethel at two seventy-five.
If, if you can go on the other side of the screen.
Did I take the microphone with me?
Yeah.
This is a lot lighter than I thought.
I'm gonna mask.
Okay.
That's perfect, thank you.
New United, we have upstream properties to LLC, who's the property owner and applicant of this application. Um, I wanted to acknowledge that we have received engineering comments from Red Peers. But a substantial portion of those comments asked that we submit a revised drainage report for them to view and they were deferring further comment until that was done. So we've submitted that revised drainage report yesterday and obviously we don't have Red Peers' full comment. The traffic experts, the town and ours have been in communication. And as a result of requests from the town expert, we dubbed it some additional traffic counts. Those were done over the weekend. And so we have not had a chance to pull together our revised traffic submission or discuss with the towns. So I'm telling you those things, let you know, we're not gonna cover those details tonight. It's not appropriate until we have all of that information done. We did receive the two letters that were passed out to you before, um, when Rock Eman gets up. I will have him address the fire marshal's letter, but the short answer is, we're gonna move the building as requested by the fire marshal. So take us some time to get together the plans and Rock will confirm that, but. With regard to the health department, this is a fairly longstanding dispute at the health department. My position is they are not the Department of Environmental Protection. It's not their place, their jurisdiction to ask us to hire licensed environmental professionals. To conduct mediation, monitoring, et cetera. So we are going to respectfully decline the health department's request that we do so. It is not the health department's job to handle environmental issues, uh, in this regard. That being said, we are a subsequent purchaser of the property. The work that was done was done seven years ago and as part of our purchase process, we took, we undertook due diligence. And determined that the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection has closed the matter for this property that was referred to in their book. So we're comfortable there are no issues that we need to worry about. And honestly, in the environmental world, when there are, is no indication of there's any issue. You stop asking questions. So we are not going to hire an LVP, we're not going to conduct monitoring, we're not gonna prepare reports. In any of that, it's not required by any statute or regulation and therefore, as I said, we will respectfully decline the question. Um, what we did wanna do is show you our plan revisions tonight. But only as, insofar as they deal with what I think was a major issue from our last discussion, which was green space. And I'm gonna turn it over at this time to Rock. What you have in front of you is a colorized plan of our site plan. That shows you the green space that is on the property, because we felt black and white wasn't really available. And then we made some design changes to increase the amount of space that's available. So Rock, let me turn it over to you to go through the plan.
Here in my laptop. Uh, good evening. Uh, I am Rock Eman. I'm a associate civil engineer with SLR International Corporation, former by local crew out of ninety-nine Realty Drive in Cheshire, Connecticut. Uh, was here last meeting. Uh, it's wonderful meeting everyone. Uh, so one of the big issues that we experienced from, or one of your largest concerns was the recreational space. Now, we have since, uh, re-looked at the, uh, the corner, I guess, section of the property. Uh, anchoring the eastern or southeastern corner, uh, along Stony Hill Road. So that would be around here. Uh, previously, there was a water quality basin that was located there. Uh, since then, we've kind of redesigned the area to actually, uh, give a kind of a pocket park feel in this corner. As well as give, uh, a little bit more buffer for car development from the street by, uh, instituting a berm. As well as, um, some, uh, just native plantings that would be located just adjacent to the berm itself. I'm more of a hands-on kind of guy, so I'm gonna hop around. So what's really going on is. There used to be a water quality basin that was located here. Uh, with that, we've since, uh, put a, uh, thank you. Uh, a sidewalk that would loop around, uh, the adjacent sidewalk that is going along Stony Hill Road. This would be in conjunction with a couple benches as well as just some, uh, open areas for people to come together, either from our development or. Technically, they really nothing stopping them from, uh, walking down Stony Hill Road and, you know, taking a rest along the bench. Uh, in conjunction with that, uh, there was a, or I guess there is a dumpster that is proposed for in this corner. Uh, with that, uh, with the berm, uh, kind of being anchored on that corner, you will not be able to see the dumpster pad. Uh, from, uh, Route six, because there's a, I believe, a six-foot-high berm along with some plantings along top of it. Along with, as previously discussed in last meeting, it's gonna be enclosed as well as have plantings around it as well. Uh, that's really the biggest change that we kind of came from, uh, our discussions last meeting. If it would be, you know, behoove everyone that, uh, that this is kind of a, a, a good development when it comes to the parcel itself. Uh, I would suggest that we take a look at, I guess, uh, kind of be amenable to making kind of, uh. Blah, 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 any recommendations for any way that we could beautify it even further, if you would be so inclined to do so. Since we are making small plan revisions at this time, uh, we can integrate more or less any changes that you would like in this proposal. Uh, some changes that were associated with this, obviously because we are removing the water quality unit or the water quality basin. Uh, we have since put that into underground detention, uh, which has been submitted as part of the revised range report that Red Peers is going to be evaluating. Uh, this is essentially the exact same kind of measure that we are mitigating the one-inch storm. Uh, and that is basically doing the exact same thing as what an above ground base would be doing except it's below grade. Uh, that's kind of in a nutshell with plan changes due to, uh, comments that we received both during Wentlands as well as planning zoning. Um, and I can turn it over to, uh, Peter in order to go through additional green spaces, additional looking spaces as well.
Rock, can you answer the question on the moving of the building?
Oh, uh, we received a town comment from the fire marshal. Uh, it is in respect to building B, which is in the top left corner. Uh, he's looking for approximately a twelve feet for firemen to access around the entirety of the building. Uh, we believe that we can shift this building over in order to complete that.
Excellent. I also asked Rock to put together a second slide, which I think is up on the screen. And what you can see is the vicinity of the property, particularly to the south. And we just wanted to emphasize to the commission that there are numerous recreational, uh, open space, uh, opportunities in the general vicinity of the property. They include town-owned property, um, include the extract, the property owned by Stony Hill Preserve. Um, the, obviously, Brooks with, uh, open space associated with that. So we made a big point, I tried to make a point, that a big chunk of this property has already been given to the town. As part of practice field that's to the rear of Copper Square and we should be getting credit for that. But we also wanted to point out the ample recreational opportunities in the vicinity of the property. So that's the purpose of this slide. Um, the last thing we wanted to discuss tonight is that, uh, based on comments from the commission and staff at the last meeting. We reached out to Copper Square and had a discussion with them about various issues, including crossing Copper Square to get to that practice field. Bob Leeson is on the Zoom call, I believe, and I've asked him to cover the contents of that meeting. So I'll get you turned on his video and you can just pay attention. Uh, Bob, unmuted?
Uh, good evening, everybody. Um, yeah, we met with, uh, uh, two members of Copper Square, the president and the vice president, and right after your last meeting. And their, uh, big concerns were, you know, parking, um, parking density, that type of thing. And we, as we went through the discussion with them, you know, what, what we uncovered was that Copper Square, when it was developed, and their bylaws, did not have any. Um, limits on how many cars owners could have. Uh, they can have four, five, six cars. They also had no, um, regulations about using the, their garages as storage, which means that people who use their cars as storage and park there. And then, you know, as one of our themes is, we wanna be good neighbors. We've been good neighbors in Bethel for a long, long time. When we built the grand. We sat down with the neighbors on Grand Street, we talked about parking, everybody was concerned, and it's, uh, two years later and it's been no issue. Uh, after we, that meeting, I sat down, I looked at how many cars we actually have at the grand park there. We have seventy-seven cars for fifty-two units. That's one point four eight spaces that are used. And, uh, we're building the same type of structure. And people can't have any more than two cars at the grand and they will not be able to have any more than two cars here. So, you know, as I said to those guys, we manage this ourselves. We talk to the tenants ourselves. We are the people on site. And we are not gonna put anyone in a situation where it doesn't work, because it hurts everyone. So we're very confident that our site that we're proposing is gonna be parked very well. Uh, and, and everybody seemed to get that, you know, as they said, they have a hundred and thirty-six units with a hundred and thirty-six owners with a hundred and thirty-six different opinions. We're one, one person that, and we control ourselves. If a tenant doesn't, uh, perform, you know, or is it unruly, we don't renew their lease, they don't stay. In that situation, what they have, it's a totally different thing. So I think we reached some understanding. They were happy we all sat down together. And, uh, you know, as, as I said earlier, we wanna be good neighbors to them and we'll do everything possible to do that. Thank you.
Um, did you have any discussion regarding access to the open space in the rear?
Yes, thanks for bringing that up here. They, again, when they did their bylaws, did not put any access from their property to get to the rear space, open space. And therefore, they said, there's no way for us to go through their property to get to that property. So it's really a, um, a, a dead end.
Thanks. I think if you look at the satellite, uh, Copper Square, it's either the, the duplex structures really obstruct. An ability to provide a, a walkway in that, but, um, you know, hopefully it will be owners of this property for many years to come and. Can work, uh, with Copper Square and any issues that arise, that we make all work together. So that's all we wanted to discuss tonight. Again, we'll have additional material submitted and hopefully. By the time, uh, the next meeting rolls around, we all set with Red Peers' comments. So we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. King, do you have any questions?
Anyway, uh, the last meeting, there was some, some confusion and discussion about the road that goes into Copper Square. And you saw somebody you were asking about, you said it's not a road, clearly a road, it shows up in every one of the maps as a road. What is, is, is that a road?
It is not a road. It's a, it's a driveway.
And it is, will there be access between your development and Copper Square?
There is an easement that allows access to Copper Square over that area.
Thank you.
No matter what is built here, there's gonna be access to Copper Square through that road. How Copper Square, I, I read. Prove me, back from the fill. So I think, uh. We couldn't, we couldn't create something here now on this property to block off that exit lane. And we don't plan to refresh on here, the active Copper Square, you know, we didn't have a Copper Square that way. It's, it's a, uh, usable emergency exit for Copper Square. We have, we have delivered it.
Linda? No questions, thank you. Rock? Penny?
No questions.
There's no specific parking that's allocated strictly for the commercial. It's all shared parking?
Yes, we have, we have not distinguished between the two.
You, are you gonna, have any plans to like number of parking spaces for units?
No, no, we will not assign parking spaces.
Alright.
Ten more, ten questions?
Um, appreciate your efforts on the green space in the corner. It just isn't a lot of road, it's a lot, but I appreciate the opportunity. If you find down the road that, uh, there's a fair, moderate number of parenting, bringing kids over there, do you think you might be able to do a little fence in there if you need it?
Yes, absolutely. That's all, yeah. We'll, we'll adapt to the situation.
Thank you, I care. Yeah, but my big concern has always been the green space. Uh, the little park is very nice, but if you have children who wanna go out and play catch, they're not going to the park to. You discussed, uh, it gave us a, a number of places where people could go. I'm talking about children who live in these buildings. I, I don't know where all these places you named were, right now, maybe I should look at, look at the map and then see it. But I, I'm thinking of the children going outside, needing a place to play. The, uh, the five acres, I believe, it was five or seven acres, that didn't have been up, donated to the town for a practice field. I've never heard anybody say that the residents of Copper Square should go back there and use that property. I've, I've never seen that. Uh, and I don't know how you would have the right to go to Copper Square to get to that property. And I, I could be wrong.
Well, no, that was, that was the point we were trying to make, is we talked to Copper Square about whether we could acquire that rights. And essentially.
Go on town property, it's a park. Go on town property, it's a park, that's a, that's a practice field.
Yeah, but why shouldn't any resident of the town be able to use that property when it's not being used by an organized event for the town? I mean, that's the point of town feels everything.
And in town feels, I don't see people in this town going out and playing there, except for the town. But that's, but that's not a town to sit.
Parlo a parlo?
But that's, that's a park. That's a children's park.
That's what the practice field park is as well. You know, I don't think there's any distinction along the lines you're trying to draw between a park and a field. You know, obviously I grew up in this town, I played on work fields. I've actually all built work field, but you know, absent an organized event, people go out and use fields all the time. That's, that's, should be encouraged. So Copper Square people directly above that. The problem is that the units mean that in order to get there, you really have to walk right through somebody's side yard.
Exactly.
Even though it's owned by the association, it's really good side yard.
I know, I went at that, I've been driving there many, many times, just so I could see if any of the people were going in there.
But keep in mind that the property was subdivided. There was a subdivision application. And the reason that that park field was donated to the town is yes, the Ruminos were interested in doing something for the town, but also because we have to. Because subdivision regulations require a donation of open space. They could have paid money and kept the land. Yeah, sure, but it made sense at that time to make that donation. But the whole reason you do open space with subdivisions is to provide land that is accessible for recreation. And whether that's field or woods that you can walk through or ride your bike through, as we do in many subdivisions. That's what it's for.
That's right, as a copper square, I can see that. It's for the property in front of there, I'm sorry, I just don't.
I mean, it was all part of the same subdivision.
Yeah, because you have, you have to go through.
But it was all part of the same subdivision, so.
But then, it's now, they're now two separate applications.
So. I just wanted to make sure I can answer all your questions slash comments, so if you have more.
For now.
Okay, Rock has an additional time.
So this kind of loops back into the previous approval. So as part of the previous approval, the land was donated. And as part of that previous plan, there was 185,600 square feet of empty. That equates to about 68.9% coverage for the site. This current revised plan shows 184,260 square feet, which is actually 68.2, a reduction of 0.7. So a small reduction, but a reduction which is also leading to the previous application, which was previously approved. In previous coverage. So we're both meeting and actually decreasing the amount of coverage, increasing the amount of free space for the development, which was also what's getting previously approved.
Okay, now, as far as this meeting goes, can, we were thinking of scheduling this for April 12th. Can we get an extension from them?
Yes, absolutely, but I suggest before we do that, then we hear some members of the public.
Oh, I'm very curious, you know, thank you very much. I have a little problem.
So I will, I will prepare an extension letter and file it tomorrow.
That'd be great. Okay, David, do you have anybody online?
Yeah, so, so I will iterate that for, that's, that's okay. So do you want to do, you want to do public comment for those that are in attendance, an intended to here first, or do you want to do Zoom first? Okay. And I would just add, for anyone that wants to offer a public comment, please state your name and address for the record, thank you.
Yes, sir. Seth Davis, 213 Copper Square Drive. I am the president of the Copper Square Association. I'm here in my individual capacity only. First, let me address some comments to what was reported about the meeting that I had with Mr. Leeson and Mr. Van Cuso. I would characterize it as a very cordial, productive meeting. Particularly about their word when they say they propose to be good neighbors, we did as well. There's a lot of common ground that could be done there. We expect when they're in, we'll be working together. Enough of the nice stuff. I want to clarify something about what was said about the access to the town playing field. I think I'm pretty good at remembering conversations that happened, getting on in years, maybe getting a little senior. I do not recall being asked to grant access to our property to that playing field. I believe what was asked was, do we at Copper Square have access to that field? And what they said was along the lines with the chairman said, we would have to go across other properties, we don't use that field. It's, it's not something that's, that's part of our recreational plan. I think that's the extent the conversation went. But to the extent there's any implication that a formal request was made for us to give access, that's just not the case. Want to clarify that, am I misspeaking here at all? Okay, if so, I didn't understand you as that, but the point is that we are not that's, that's right of access, that's not ours to grant or even have, so just let's get that clarified. As far as parking, are somewhat comforted by the fact that the regulations that are proposed will control the parking. What concerns me is how can these be made permanent? I don't know what the applicable law here is as to what you can put in the site plan approval for making those conditions remain. But we're concerned that someday there may be a new owner of the property that won't be as efficient and as rigorous in applying these regulations as this company seems to be. And I hope you can give us that protection there. Fact remains irrespective of the fact that Mr. Leeson mentioned the fact that we at Copper Square do not currently prohibit storage in our garages. Most of our garages are used for storage. We have, if we generously say half of them are used for storage, we've got an additional 68 parking spaces, that's not even half, because the duplexes have two garages each. And as I said before, we have parking problems. There's going to be a crunch on parking if you're going to be able to limit it to two cars per apartment. This new development, God bless, I think it'll work. I think it's going to be a struggle. I mean, just as you as a commission to put some teeth into it for us, to be sure that it's going to last. Let me pull your attention to what our frankly, biggest concern is, can we get that site plan up again? Just want to be sure that you're about what I was about to talk about. Well, while, while, while he's working on that, yes, do you have it in front of you there? No, I can, I can sketch it out verbally for you. I'm very concerned about the placement of the proposed building B in proximity to our 400 block of buildings. It's in the far western corner of the property. And it isn't quite as apparent on this map and what you have there because the way the coloring is. What's next to that building was gray. Kind of looks like a parking lot, it's not, it's a building. And those buildings, as you have it on their map, are going to be very close together, closer than any of our buildings are at Copper Square, and we're in the same community. I'd say if you look further up, I can put this out of mind. I live in the 200 unit, which is the unit where the backyards, oh, there we go, it's okay. Rehashing it here. This is, this is building B. These are the 400s. This is the property we're talking about here. Those flowering trees are not there, there are no flowering trees. We have one, one row of arborvitae that we just had to replant. That's the distance between the buildings with a retention pond dugout, kind of a dugout in between. Very close, you can see here, this is where I live. It's pretty close, it's about the same kind of distance. I don't have a problem with it, some of my neighbors do. We've had proposals at our homeowners associations and put some kind of a visual screening up in there, it's something we're going to have to look at. But right now, and, and I may have heard you say that there's some thought about repositioning building B to account for the fire marshals. I'd be interested in knowing what that's going to be. We find this to be just an unacceptable situation. But that's, that building is just too close to us, it's going to have visual impacts, it's going to have quality of life impacts for the people that are out there. Bear in mind, we have people with terraces here, patios, they use recreational areas. And they're going to be backing up now against a three story parking building. Fortunately, it's not one of the four story ones. So that in a nutshell, I don't want to take up too much of your time. But if we can have some clarification about whether that building B restructuring, repositioning rather, is going to give us some kind of relief on that. I can say, and I don't think I'm talking out of school on this, that Mr. Leeson and Mr. Van Cuso were sympathetic to us on this. They represented to us that the building is positioned there in order to allow traffic to go around to recent commercial buildings. Understand all this, but it just comes back to our basic objection, our basic concern with this property that does too much. That 137 units on this piece of property is too much for it to bear, too much for the community next to it to bear, and that's us. And I think too much for the whole town of Bethel to bear. So I ask you to look at that to see if something can be done. Happy to continue working with you and the owners. Again, as I said last time, we want this property developed and we want it built properly. We don't, we're not saying that nothing should be built here. We want something nicely built here, we have faith in this company that they can do something proper. But what's, what's here now poses a problem for us.
Do we have any other persons in the attendance tonight that wish to offer a comment? Okay, that being said, we'll reach out to those who are on Zoom. What I would ask, if you are not familiar with presenting, we're offering testimony through Zoom, that you do what's called raising your hand. There's a reactions icon in the toolbar at the bottom of the Zoom app. Clicking on that icon opens up a small window with a button inside that says, with an option for you to raise your hand. That lets us know that you have testimony that you wish to offer or a comment that you wish to offer. So I will give a few moments, Madam Chair, to see if there's anyone that has comment to offer otherwise, before we go back to you. I am not seeing anyone at this time, but be advised, there may be someone who figures out how to offer comment in the meantime. And we're just to chime in, so I will let you know if that happens.
Peter, would you like to speak to?
One moment. Peter Olson, again, the fire department, the fire marshal's letter asked that the building be moved away from the property line to accommodate fire trucks behind the building. So they could reach the third floor from that space. I don't know how we're going to accomplish that yet. But the short answer is the building will be moved away from the property. Number one. Number two, the landscaping plan that is in your record shows that between the building and the property line will be autumn brilliance service fairer, which grow to about 60. So there will be screening that we are installing in that space between the building and property.
That was just came through to them?
Well, the ones on the landscaping plan seem to be staggering, so. I can't, but there were about six of them and there's not six there. I can't tell you that's exactly the case, but and autumn brilliance doesn't sound like it's pink to me, it sounds more like an orange, but I'm not in that. The other point I'd like to make is that when you compare this plan to the approved plan, the approved plan had a bank in this location. And then it had parking behind the bank on the property. And we've, we've switched that, we put the property, the parking in front, which we think has less of an impact on the neighboring units than the building does. And also brings that parking more into use for the commercial that's along the street from it. You remember there was a restaurant in the front left here that was angled 90 degrees the other way. So there was some, some parking there, but not enough. So it brings that parking more into usage for the commercial, which helps the commercial with things that the commercial needs to survive. So we think this is a better layout to have the parking on this side of the building than to have it over here. But that's it, I think that answers the question. Just in terms of how we interpreted the meeting.
Ladder.
Okay. He doesn't want to drive a truck back there. So that means we don't have to put pavement again. In terms of how we interpreted the meeting, I think our interpretation was that the association did not, was not in the position to grant us the right across their property to reach the playing field. And that's how we interpreted it. So it's not as if we made a formal request for that access, we just, we assumed that they couldn't give it to us and so that was the end of the discussion. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm still not seeing anyone at this time on Zoom that has, that has their hand raised to offer public comment, Madam Chair.
Matt, do you have anything you would like to add today? Okay, so, anyone with any public question or question? Okay, so I think we're going to, no, excuse me. We're going to take, staple this up until April 12th. And Peter, you're going to get us the right thank you very much, I appreciate it. Okay, so we're going to open up our business.
Okay.
Steven on Zoom?
I would say yes, but.
I'll wait to find out. Or Ken Stevens?
I'm sorry?
Or is Ken Stevens or Rich Tiff on Zoom?
I don't, I don't see either of them on Zoom at this time.
Okay, all right, then I'm going to seat Doug for Ken. And I'll see Rob for Rich. So, the minutes. I need a motion for the minutes of 2:22. We have any invoices, Matt? Yes, we do, we do. In the amount of $760.20 related to even notice. That made motion? Okay. In business, we have nothing. Work session, got the hour, portal has. Work session, Garcia, portal housing application, A through DG, 13 units, 6 to 08. This is up for discussion tonight. Ken, would you like to start the discussion on this application?
Can we start over on this whole project? That's my approach statement.
That's interesting, okay. Here we go. Paul Shams.
I honestly don't know what crazy plan we're working at. They came in in the 11th hour, literally the 11th hour, that new plan. Which was a step in the right direction. I wish they had brought that to us to start with. The one thing I will say is in the, the 11th hour crazy plan, they got rid of the little cottage. Little one bedroom, man, I'm not wrong, maybe a long, long cottage, a little gate, for individual house, single family. I think that was the one portion of it that we all, everyone kept just ignoring, just knowing that's probably with it. It fit with the whole neighborhood. But then they come back with a new crazy plan, and I'm using their words, but it was a crazy plan. And then that, that part was gone, and then we trumped the other building and made it two, I think it was. I don't know where to start, because it was all crazy. And again, that was the large works, so. Yeah. And I have some serious, if it was to go through, if you were to consider the first crazy plan, we have some serious safety concerns with. Bus stop. And any kids that are living there walking down the street, any kids that are already living in that road, and the added vehicles on the road. That's it.
I'm opposed to it the way it came in, and still opposed to it the way we left it last time. I think it's a mess. I think the town is being deceived. I think we are being played. And I think that this has been a nightmare since the get-go. But there has been no attempt to clean up that property, which was something that everybody said at the beginning, we drove down. It's, it's just, it's a nightmare to look at. Shows that the owner and the developer have absolutely no stake in creating a neighborhood here. I, if it were presented to me right now, I would vote no. That move.
Well.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. So I, I would agree with him in the extent here. What I have, I think, is more of a question that's still relatively up here is, when the disposition of the algorithm is so clearly deceitful. Are we bound to consider? There, there's got to be, you know, up there somewhere. I, I don't know if the commissioner of the town saw it, but that's, to me, it just, the amount of, of, you know, deceit that was put into the plan, in our, the tax system, we couldn't script this any better. If they're not taking risks, why are we bound to consider this?
Thank you, Beth. Well, I feel that can, can we do, so listen to the land use commission, the, the office, the neighbors.
Yeah.
That true? I think you have to take consideration, is that right? Oh, right, right. Yeah. Basically, you're talking about a recommendation beyond the original plan.
So. I, I would recommend that we deny this. And have them come back with what they think they want to do. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's, yeah. That's the way I feel.
I agree, you know, there's so much confusion about what we're talking about. This is, this plan, I believe, now is the most recent plan. Clearly, it's a 11th hour project. So makes, makes more sense as everybody agrees with Paul, that, you know, the, the one piece that actually was decent was a little, a little house, and that's the one piece we got heard of. We would spread parking and buildings everywhere. You know, and I'll, I still go back to the safety of the town. This is, it doesn't fit this neighborhood, the traffic pattern, which is popular across town. So, you know, the other, the other concern too is, people are gonna have two cars in the apartment. They have a party, they put a park car everywhere on the road, and back in the lot area.
Thank you. Well, I agree with everyone. I, I, I look at, I remember the day I went, I spent about 40 minutes walking the property. And the thing that hit me the most was the, the building, with the, three apartments were. Yeah, it were like concrete blocks where the steps were, with wrought iron rails. And the concrete steps, because of time and erosion and whatever, were almost out of the ground. And the rust from, from the wrought iron had bled all over the place. There was a walkway that was made out of asphalt that looked like it, it was. You couldn't walk it because it was up and down and cracked, and it was absolutely, it doesn't, I think, I think public health, safety, and welfare. To have more apartments for these people to take care of. Which they obviously don't take care of. To me, I would worry about the residents of these, of these new buildings. And, and, and the other thing is, it doesn't fit the neighborhood. At A through G, whatever the application is, it should blend with the area, and this is not. So I would say keep going. Beth, do you have anything else to add?
No. Make a formal consensus.
Okay, so the consensus, I.
It's a consensus.
To deny this application. Commission members, raise your hand. Or three, or we should.
I would have them speak, Kitty.
Okay, each one, please.
No. No.
No.
Nope.
Kitty Grant, no. No.
Don Keone, no.
So we have a consensus, and this, here, this is moving on. All right. Planners report.
Your next hearing is scheduled March 22.
Yes.
And it's going to be the wellhouse over matted softball field.
All right.
And also the middle school turf field.
Right.
Can I make a suggestion that we do it in a conference room?
Well, that would be nice.
I don't know how everyone feels about that.
Yeah. Go, go to one, go to one, face, yes, please.
Okay, I know that the, the attendance is not going to be overwhelming, so I think.
I would like to make a motion to have a 320, a 322 meeting in the PMZ room.
I'll second that.
All papers?
No move.
Motion, yes. But, but I'm sorry, just for March 22. Okay, a planner's report?
That's, that was it.
That was it? Spot release? Commission, have any comments to make? Is BJ around? BJ, are you around?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
She.
I have no comments.
I don't know if we can. No, we, we couldn't hear her. I'm, I'm not sure why that is.
Okay, can I just ask a follow-up question? Wait, for March 22, will that still be available by Zoom?
Not, not in the PMZ room.
Can't.
Okay, yes.
Can we reach out to see if, BJ, see, see if you can speak again, BJ, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I can speak, but I didn't have anything to say.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure you had your opportunity.
We love you, BJ.